The June 20th, 2023 meeting of the City Council of City of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Looks like you all have. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Ms. DeBusher.
Here.
Madam Mayor, the quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. I'm going to start off the meeting by reading the civility pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Now, we're going to get into the zoning agenda. The item on the agenda is docket number 2023-018 for the property located at 127 North 22nd Street. The petitioner is Mohammed Alomani as a contract purchaser. The present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.40.040, and R-2 Single Family and Duplex Residence District. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to R-2 Single Family and Duplex Resident District, Section 155.017, and a variance of Sections 155.001. Definitions: Lot to allow two single-family residences on the same lot, 155.010. See general provisions to allow two residential buildings on one lot, 155.061. Basic yard requirements to allow a side yard setback for the rear building, Building Two, of approximately one foot instead of the three feet per code, and 155.055, minimum lot width for residences to allow two single-family dwellings on a lot with a 49-foot width instead of a 50-foot width per code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendations from the commission.
Second.
All right. So there was a motion by Alderman Williams and a second by Alderman Donlin. Any discussion on this?
Is the petitioner's here?
I don't think so.
Okay, no worries. Thanks. I was just going to salute him with the 22 Streets pledge.
Guess they don't want your salute tonight. So all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 22023-019 for the property located at 92 Island Bay Lane. The petitioner is Eric Hillier. Present zoning classification is R-1 Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. The requested zoning relief is a variance of Section 3 setbacks of Appendix A of the Land Use Plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow construction of a wood deck on the east side of the house with the addition structure to have an approximate 12 feet from the north corner of the deck to the lake shoreline and approximately 15 feet from the center of the deck to the lake shoreline instead of the 75 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval provided the deck remains open and does not extend beyond the edge of the retaining wall shown on Exhibit B. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
So I have a motion from Alderman Redpath and a second from Alderman Hanauer. I think you beat the others. Any discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. That will conclude the zoning portion of our meeting. The Chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath figure for a presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Busher. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund of the month of May. Beginning balance, $67,056,027. We took in total receipts of $17,401,161. We had total disbursements in the month of May totaling $9,449,734, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of May at $75,7,454. The ending balance includes $21,867,158, which is the May ending balance of the ARPA money. Thank you. That concludes my report.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report from the Treasurer.
Moved.
First from Alderman Donlin, second from Alderman Redpath.
Any discussion on the financial report? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The motion carries. The Chair is now going to recognize the OBM Director Ramona Metzger for a presentation of the OBM financial report. Do we have an OBM contract report? No? Okay. We'll do that next time.
Okay.
The Chair is now going to entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 6th, 2023 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
Moved.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the recording of this council meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Vote.
Need to vote.
We got to vote.
Vote, vote. All right, we'll vote.
Can I get a question?
Oh, sorry, Alderman Carlson, go ahead.
Quick question. I don't know if this year... On 2023-2-267, the 20 radar feedback signs, are those the part of the speed readers that I think were adopted last year in the city budget or not? Oh, there's Chief, Chief is here.
You are correct. As part of the budget funds, we identified we're going to purchase essentially 20 sets is what it is, so 40 different units. We purchased 10 here, which will be one for each ward based upon speeding concerns within your...
One, okay. I'm going to need eight of those, but no, one will be fine.
They prove effective and that would be a good use of funds.
Okay, thank you. So, hold up, Chief.
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
So I've seen, I'm seeing you around in both directions at the same, on the same streets. Does that count as one or does that count as two?
That's one set.
Oh, so they are, so you have 10 sets?
We have 10 sets.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Purchase.
Do you know, thank you, Madam Mayor, do you know when we will receive those?
I don't. Obviously, now that the ordinance has passed, we'll proceed with the purchasing process.
So that one set that we have on 11th Street, how long did it take for that to come in or was that through you?
No, that was through Public Works. They purchased that and, you know, we kind of modeled our purchase after what they, what they purchased. So I don't know how long it took or any of those specifics. I'll find out and let you know though.
Okay. And then, once you do get them in or have a schedule of when they would come in, can you send us how we're going to figure out where they should go and how long they should be in those areas too?
Yeah, I think the ideal method would be to sit down with each one of you and identify specific areas within your wards that we think are most needed. And obviously, there are some things we have to consider as far as state routes versus city routes and all that stuff, but, you know, I want to hear from you all where we think it's their best served.
Every street.
Yeah, right.
I was going to say the same thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion on this? All right. So some of those of you that are in favor of the consent agenda, please vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. That's 10 voting yes and none voting no. Agenda numbers 2022-384, 2023-086, 2023-173, 2023-201, and 2023-202. And 2023-203 remain tabled during committee. Does anyone want any action on those? Okay. The next item on the agenda is 2023-235, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Matthew Seago and Elizabeth Seago for property located at 5 Lamp later Lane. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular City Council meeting to hold a public hearing regarding the annexation agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone in the council chambers wish to address the council regarding the annexation agreement?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a first and a second with a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-235 on final passage.
So moved. Thank you.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion carries with 11 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 202023-236, an ordinance annexing certain described real estate property located at 5 Lamp later Lane. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-236 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on that ordinance? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-254, an ordinance accepting RFP PW 24-02 with PH Broughton &amp; Sons Incorporated and Rehan Brothers Incorporated, DBA Sangamo Construction Company for ally and street repairs in an amount not to exceed $600,000 for the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-258, an ordinance approving the appointment of James A. Sullivan as Information Systems Division Director.
So moved.
Chair, we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Alderman Williams.
Yes, so is the resume available yet?
He has worked at the city for, he's ill, so he's not here this evening, but he's worked at the city since Mayor Davlin's administration, so I did not ask him for one because he's been here forever.
Well, my concern is that the position that he's going to, trying to learn if he's qualified for that position, and I just think we should see a resume, Mayor, just like we've seen him for all of the appointments.
Well, I can say the previous administration did not always have resumes, but I can ask him to put one together for you if you would like. But he, he's worked in that department his whole time here.
Yeah, I understand that, but again, it's the title and the position that he's going to, and I would say that, you know, if we're moving forward, we're not going to talk about previous, you know, how they conducted themselves. Right now, we're asking for our appointments to have resumes sent to us, and I have been waiting to see if this guy is qualified for this position. So, I mean, it's your appointment and your, you know, priority, but if it could wait, I would like it to wait, but I'll leave that up to you, Madam Mayor.
I think we're good to vote on it, but thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Motion, our voting is now open. Oh. And the motion carries with seven voting yes and three voting present, looks like. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-259, an ordinance approving the appointment of Gregory E. Mordock as Corporation Counsel.
So moved.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay. All those, the voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting, motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-260, an ordinance approving the pre-appointment of Alderman Ralph Hanauer to serve on the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Alderman Donlin.
I'm just kidding.
Alderman Rockford.
Me too.
Voting is now open then, I think. Those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-261, an ordinance approving the appointment of Alderwoman Lakeisha Purchase to serve on the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Anyone with discussion on this? Alderman Williams.
Yes, I request that we hold this. I haven't had time to talk except when she just walked in. On my reasons, I can...
I'm sorry, can I ask who she is?
The person, Lakeisha.
Okay, sorry.
You know. If she's willing to, you know, you know, hear it out or, I don't want to talk about it, my reason for not voting for it now, but it is important and I'm asking if this can be, wait till next time, because she may want to withdraw her name.
I see.
Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Purchase.
I am not going to want to withdraw, but I, you just said something to me coming in, so I, I'm fine with holding it so that you could speak to me privately about it, but I still want to attend tomorrow, my first meeting.
I think, did they cancel it because there was nothing on the agenda or was that a different...
I think that's next month.
Oh, next month, okay.
But can I still attend, Madam Mayor, without this being approved today?
You can attend, but you wouldn't be an official member if we don't take a vote. Wouldn't that be correct, Corporation Counsel?
That's correct. You can attend, but you wouldn't be able to vote at the meeting.
Anybody can attend, they have...
Right, it's a public meeting. Is there, should we let the two of you talk for a minute? Do you want me to take a recess?
I think she will want that, she will want us to have a discussion and she's big on wanting, you didn't tell me. So I want to tell her before anything goes out in the public, so.
Well, I'm asking if you would like me to recess the meeting and let the two of you have a discussion. I'm Madam Mayor.
That's fine.
Okay.
Five-minute recess.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess the regular City Council meeting for five minutes.
Thank you. We have a first and a second to recess. Any discussion? All right. Do you want anyone else to go or just the two of you?
You need to, you need to have a vote.
Oh, sorry. Can we have a vote to have the recess?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, sorry. Motion passes. Do you need anyone to go with you? Do you want Corporation Counsel to go with you or no?
She can. It's fine, it doesn't matter. Chief.
Thank you, Greg. Frank's glad that we have a recess.
Yeah.
On everything. Getting a little older.
So Gulf, I think they need to get a speed sign on Gulf, like Alderman, on Gulf Street?
Well, Gulf Street, yes.
Yeah, they come down Greenbrier and then like...
I live near there.
Yeah, they bank the carpets, it really is.
Yeah, but I got, I mean, West Jersey was poor.
I mean, where do people not see... They're buying in the phases.
Okay, right. That was past one, yeah, stage one.
We're not going to get to one.
We can talk about it.
Already established, you're overachieving, I'm looking at first.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
She wants to go, but I ain't she...
We should save this. Let me use the gavel? All right, I'm going to get a motion to call the meeting back to order, please?
So moved.
And a second? Any discussion on that? All right, the meeting is back in session. So we were entertaining a motion on ordinance 2023-261. Can I get a motion, did we have a motion and a second clerk on that before? I don't remember.
You did.
Okay, we were on discussion. Got it. Okay. So any further discussion on that? Alderman Redpath.
Call the question.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Okay.
So we're, can I have a question to the General Counsel?
No, there's been a call to question. There's no debate on a call to question.
So I can sit here all night and call the question and we move on? On everything? Is that, is that what you're, you're telling me?
If there's a call to question, then a vote takes place and there's, there's no debate on a call to question. Whatever has been moved and seconded is, is voted upon. And then if the vote fails on the call to question, well, if the vote passes, then we move on to the next ordinance.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. The question's been called, so we cannot discuss this, sir.
Okay, we won't discuss this anymore.
We're discussing Robert's rules of order?
Yes. Okay, so I just want you to know...
Yes, sir.
That I, I try to participate this way because now I only have one option to go to with this. It's not against you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes with eight voting yes, two voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-262, with the appointment, approving the appointment of Gregory C. Tally as the Executive Director of Oak Ridge Cemetery for the Office of Public Works.
Moved. Moved for passage.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay. Voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-263, an ordinance amending Chapter 99, Sections 99.29 and 99.34, A, B, C, D of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to excavations. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-263 on final passage.
So moved.
We have a first, we have a second.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? And I think we have, we'll have some discussion.
Motion to amend.
All right, so Alderman Hanauer has a first and a second to amend, and Alderwoman Conley, you have signed up to speak.
I did, yes. I just, thank you, Alderman Hanauer, just a brief amendment that covers, and again, thank you Corporation Counsel for pulling this together so quickly, the conversation we had last week. So we propose an amendment to add the following language to the end of Section 99.34D. Trees and shrubs damaged during excavation shall, after the damage becomes apparent and at the request of the city and the adjacent property owners, be removed or removed and replaced with the type and quality of trees and shrubs that existed prior to excavation. This shall be done within three weeks after notice is provided by the city.
So we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Alderwoman Conley just read. Okay. The voting is open. I need all those opposed, in favor of the amendment, please vote yes.
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes for the amendment. Now, we're going to go ahead and continue the discussion as the amended. Any...
Pass to vote for final passage as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the amended version of this ordinance? Okay. Voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-271, an ordinance authorizing reclassification of budget lines that house HUD grant activities into the Corporate Fund for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-271 on final passage.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
Thank you for your explanation for this move. I'm all about speed and I appreciate the explanation. I do plan on supporting this.
No problem. Any other discussion? Voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-278, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 23-203186 from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $3 million for the Community Connections Program and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $3 million for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this emergency passage? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. If we could just have the chief come up and just give a...
Chief Scarlett?
Just a quick description of what, what you're using this $3 million for.
So this is funding that I've worked myself and various Aldermen and the previous mayor staff worked diligently with Senator Turner's office about. It's really designed for violent crime reduction and community outreach and education in our city. So it's divided, $3 million would be divided into various components that deal with a lot of that stuff. I've got, I don't know how much detail you want, but I got about three pages of stuff here that we...
Can you summarize three pages into like a paragraph?
So technology components, some SkyWatch systems, the increase of ShotSpotter area, pre-NIBIN training... I'm sorry. Pre-NIBIN screening tool. We've got some training and equipment needs on here. Training simulator that we plan on purchasing from the education component. We're looking at various community engagement components. A Fix-It program that we've identified. ShotSpotter Connect event, something that we did last fall that we plan on doing a couple times this year. And then a handful of our officers came up with some ideas that they'd like to participate throughout the community. The Dollhouse Project, our officer Fluke does that. Cooking with a Cop, Painting the Queen event, school backpack giveaways, various other events that just help with community engagement.
Wonderful. And you'll let us know when these events are coming?
Absolutely.
So we can help share the word. Great. And just last question. Is there a city match for this grant?
No. This is... It's not a grant. It was built into the budget, the last year's budget, and we're just now getting it approved through the state to spend it.
Okay, so this is... I was going to say, I thought we'd already had talk about all of this.
Well, I've been talking about it for pretty much a year now.
And we do listen to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. And it's finally come to fruition where it's going to be time to spend it. Unfortunately, we've just got to get it approved before the state budget ends at the end of this month.
Okay, well, that was my next question. Does this all need to be allocated by the end of June, or...
Taking... The grant itself has been... Will be... Or the money itself has been extended through the next year. We just have to take possession of it.
Okay, so that's... This vote gets us solid for the fiscal year. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank you in chief for bringing this forward. It's very, very important to our community as you... As we all hear from some of the things that Chief did list off. We're going through various things as we speak right now. I'm sure they are putting game plans together to try to slow down. I'm happy to see this. I'm glad it didn't expire or even us get in that situation. So thank you for your diligent work.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I appreciate you coming up here and explaining it briefly. And, you know, I think it's important to point out that it's been being worked on for quite some time. I want to thank Senator Turner for all her work on this. That's a considerable, probably historic amount of money. Absolutely. Coming to the city of Springfield, anybody in this room that's been involved. And... But I think you touched upon it, the importance. It's not just about equipment. It's not just about some of the bells and whistles that are extremely important for the department. I think we've proven that over the last few years. But that community outreach component is just extremely important. I'm glad to hear you at least touch upon that. Chief, what I'd like to say, and I don't expect you to do it tonight, but I'd like to see... I know you've been working on a plan and have some of the stuff in... Or all of it actually in writing. I'd like to learn a little bit more about it, maybe sit down with you and just... But, you know, I'm glad to hear you say it's not all about equipment.
Yeah.
There is a... You know, Springfield has had... I should say, our country's had some challenging issues the last few years. And Springfield, I think, has fared very well because of that community engagement. It's never been more important.
Yeah, it's about building trust and confidence. I say this all the time with our constituents. And this is how we do it, is through engagement aspects and components. And there's a lot of great things in here that I worked with Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams on, and they signed off on all the stuff that is going to be purchased and performed throughout the years. It's going to be great.
Any other discussion on this ordinance? Okay. Voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the council from the members? Alderman Gregory.
I just got a few things I would request. I don't want... You know, nobody has to come up now or anything. I just want to go on my notes. And these are just some old things, like that $3 million Community Connection thing that was in my notes. I'm happy to see that. We talked a little bit about the Bloomberg Harbor study. And in that, I see, you know, many things that we have done and that we've talked about up there. So I think that that is going to be a positive step for us. Me and Mr. Fuchs, honestly, we're just on a humbug. And we were talking about just ways to improve. And a thought was, and I don't know if I need an ordinance for this or not, but a thought was is that... Because we do see a lot of building materials and stuff in these fly dumping situations. And how can we incorporate similar to our dump receipt situation on inspection or when permits are pulled on some of these houses? Like, can they prove to us that they're taking it to the dump anyway? And I'm willing to work with anybody on that, on how we figure that out. But I think that will help us, slow us down. Recently, we had UIS working for about a year now, over a year, working on some things with the empowerment zone. It was an ordinance that we did pass here. I do believe they're supposed to give us an update on this at the end of the month. And I'm just wondering where we are with that situation, as well as a design for Mr. Schaefer. We passed that money as well in February for him to do a design for that, for a piece of that building. There's an old situation that we got to clear up. And that's that CARES Act money. There was $400,000 approved by HUD in CARES Act money for workforce development. And that's really, really important, because as we have more and more funding for housing and various projects, we need the workers. And, you know, I want our city to somehow find a way to partnership with whoever, you know, is qualified to make this happen, to strengthen our workforce in Springfield, and to utilize that money in a good way. I think that's important. These funds, I'm asking about it just to get a report and get an update on, because I would like to continue these things. And I know you may have different thoughts as well. And I'm always willing to talk about how we can best utilize these funds that we send down for communities like the one I represent. And finally, our cannabis business grant. I'm a person that doesn't operate on rumors or anything like that. I just want to ask you, as I asked the other mayor, that those individuals who are still working be extended some time. You know, I asked that for the application period, the first application, so people could get in. And I ask that now for businesses in our community. Some of them are longstanding businesses. I had a great conversation with Director Yezel. I know she is working with some of them. But some of them are scared that they're going to lose that funding by June 30th and not be able to complete their desired task. Some people have dropped the ball, and that's on them. However, there are some that really, really want to continue that. So I would ask that we do whatever we have to do to see completed projects. I don't think it hurts us for this type of funding to be helped make successful and by given time or whatnot, considering the workforce that we have. That's it. I know it's a long list. I apologize. But there's a lot of funds, you know, that have come down that we have been planning to use and do things with. So I just want to update on those things and see how we can work to implement those things out. Thank you.
Okay, we will follow up with you, Alderman. Alderman Redpath.
So last week or so, we talked about the fly dumping situation throughout the city. And we talked about putting some teeth into the ordinances and increasing the fines and stuff. And my phone rang off the wall when I got home. So what they were talking about is that you can put all the fines you want up, and you can increase your penalties and everything else, and the state's attorney won't prosecute them. So my thing right now is to ask our Corporation Counsel to schedule a meeting with the state's attorney to find out why they won't prosecute them. And let me tell you who the people were that called them. They were county board members who had the same situation in the county. So we can sit here and talk about how we want to get tough on dilapidated houses and fly dumping and everything else. If we can't get any cooperation out of the state's attorney's office, that's a problem. So, Mr. Corporation Counsel, if you would, I would ask you to reach out to them to see what the problem is. I don't know if there's such a situation that... In the old days, we used to have a municipal court that had the authority to do things outside the state's attorney's office. If that's the situation where they're not going to cooperate and enforce the rules and regulations that we put in, maybe we ought to think about establishing our own municipal court if we have the authority to do that. I don't know if we do. But if you would talk to him and find out what the problem is.
I will work with their office.
Thank you.
Is that Alderman Redpath?
That's me.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've been hearing on the radio that you're going to appoint... Or proposing to appoint Alderman... Alderwoman DeCensal to the Liquor Commission Chairman?
Former Alder.
Your former Alderwoman.
Yeah.
Yes. And so some of my constituents brought to my attention, and maybe Alderman Redpath or Hanauer or maybe Donlin can help with this, or General Counsel, that we have an ordinance that says that former officials must wait three years before they're appointed? Or is that not true? It's not true?
I'm not familiar with that ordinance. I can check.
It's out there, but the council could... If they have the votes, they could approve her with the council votes. Yes, it's out there.
Like a citation, if it exists, please.
Well, let me just ask that, if you could, Mayor, give me some information on that before.
Sure. Clerk Lesko would have read it into the ordinances for first reading this evening, so we can have Corporation Counsel Moradok send an email out.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else, Alderman Williams?
Yes, so, you know, again, the Gail Simpson situation came up when Mayor Langfelder was trying to appoint her. And some of the members that are still around may remember this in 2016. I don't know. But they denied her because she had just got off a year ago. And, of course, in my community, they're saying, "DeCensal just got off months ago, and yet it's okay." So I'm trying to get them an answer.
Okay.
So I'll just wait. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Alderman Redpath's comments, thanks for bringing that up, Alderman. I think that's something that is near and dear to all our hearts. And my understanding, though, just at times, I like to let my mind and just let it all out. And that's what I'm going to do. My recollection is that we have those types of violations. Since we're a home rule community, would be an ordinance violation. Therefore, they would go through our administrative court process. And at the county... I know you'll correct me, Mr. Moradok, because that's what you're paid to do. But at the county, I think it goes through the county process, which includes... Which would obviously include involving the state's attorney. And so if we need to revamp our process or do something to make it more palatable and more effective, certainly willing to help out. But I think that's what we're going to find out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, if we catch somebody fly dumping and have an ordinance violation, the initial fine is $500, and then it's $1,000 after that. And we would prosecute that through our office.
If I may follow up, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is an issue that affects every one of us. And it's a... I know that Alderman Gregory and Williams, Alderman Rockford, and Alderman Purchase have severe problems in their areas with people just going down the alleys and dumping stuff. That's ridiculous. That people should not have to live like that, and we should not allow it. And if we can't get some enforcement on this thing, it's going to be a problem. We got to stay strong and tough on this. We really do. Because we need to keep our city clean and safe. And the only way we do that is by prosecuting these people. Because, like they said, the dumping fee's $140, and they're charging people $100 to take it off. Where do you think they're going to dump it? They're not going to dump it in the dump. And they're going to lose $40 in the deal. So there's... We got to crack these people. So that's my final thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. First, I think that I would be open to... And I don't know what our maximum that we're at. I don't know if there's a maximum ceiling that we can go to. But if it's $500 and $1,000, then I'd be willing to jump it. First time you get caught is $1,000. And then go whatever, whatever the council wants.
You know, we ought to see if we can get it done first. If we can get the prosecutions and the fines established that we're... We go in there and crack them.
Right, I'm not opposed to... That was my next item. But, you know, we can make it whatever it is. But we got to make sure that our administrative court judge knows that we're not... We don't want people let off on this stuff. I think in the past, people have gotten away with a lot of things, and they just go back because they know that they can say the right thing or they can show they cleaned up something or whatever. And it just... They were let go. We need to be strict about this. And so... But I would, you know, if we have to raise it, it's up to the council. I'm more than happy to request an ordinance to increase it and go $1,000, $1,500, $2,000, first, second, and third violation. It's unfortunate, the third violation, I know we can't put people in jail, but that would... If they're habitual at it, they probably deserve some time. But then that gets state's attorney involved, and they don't want to do that. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, and I think it goes back to talking with Chief Scarlett about cameras. You know, they can show up to court, and we can find them. But let's get some proof, and let's hold them to the, you know, to the fire. You know? Let's be proactive instead of reactive like we've been for so long, you know? We've sat here, we've talked now for two months. You know, it's time to... Let's start moving forward with it.
Alderman Rockford, I did tell the media that I don't think people saw a female mayor and just started fly dumping. It's been going on for years.
Yes.
Yes, indeed. For a long time.
I'm just saying, we just need to do it. You know, it's been going on for way too long. And again, I'll say this. I don't know what the follow-up process with Public Works is in. I stopped over there. I drive by the houses that I've turned in, and it's still sitting there. So I don't know what the process is. And, again, it gets frustrated, frustrating, and it gets old, looking at this... The same houses, the same places that people go and dump, and nothing's being done. Nothing's being done. You've got cars parked the wrong way on streets, blocking traffic. I mean, it just... It gets old, you know? And you make calls, and you talk to people, and nothing happens. So, again, instead of talking about it, we just got to move on it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on unfinished business? We're on to new business. Any new business to come before the council? I have one item. Alderman Williams, I think you're the chairman in October. If you want to look at your schedule, I was scheduling stuff for myself in October. And it looks like we're scheduled to have a committee of the whole meeting on Halloween, October 31st. So I don't know if you would want to look at your schedule, because you'll be the chairman, I think, in October. I'll keep my silly comments to myself. So I don't know if you would want to move that. So I was going to suggest that to you.
It's a pleasure to counsel. I foreyou're in a... You're a little loud. Remind me, and we'll work it out.
I just didn't want to wait to the last minute, like in the past. So I wanted to bring that up. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I was trying to click as faster than you could talk.
I got faster than you.
You did. You did. Fast... Two months, and you're already learning all these things. No, I just wanted to... Just a gentle reminder, I know school's out, but the schools clearly are still running programs, summer programs. And on my drive over to City Hall tonight, Alderwoman Purchase in your ward, bus pulled over, had two arms out with the stop signs, lights were blinking. I slowed down. I was almost rear-ended by the car that then swerved around me to pass the bus. And then I watched another car slow down a little bit and then shoot past a bus with its arms... Its stop signs out with children getting off. So just a reminder, people, what you do when you drive makes a difference. And these are our children. There's trying to do something right over summer and getting more educational opportunities. And we've got people still driving like fools. And, you know, I had a bad accident, or at least looked bad in my ward on Veterans Parkway. You know, it'd be nice if we could all just maybe slow down a little bit. I know we've talked about speed limits, we've talked about speed humps. If you'd just lighten off the gas pedal a little bit. And that's my mom lecture for early summer. And tomorrow, I believe, is the actual first day of summer. So to those who celebrate, Happy Solstice. And please slow down your driving.
It's a good lecture to have, and I welcome it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have some advance requests to address the council. And I believe our first speaker is coming next week. I'm just going to go ahead and say his name in case he did come. Mike Beckman? Nope. Okay, so Alice Ramey. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor.